Welcome to the City Commission Meeting for Mount Clemens on Monday, September 21st, 2020. We'll call the meeting to order.
It's seven o'clock.
Thanks, Andy.
And everyone rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call please.
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Goodenough?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Here. Mensah?
Here.
Voorhees?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. I see we have the department reports. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Johnson?
I do not.
Are there any questions or comments from any commissioners on the department reports?
I have none.
Did we ever just... Oh, we did get Commissioner Mensah's audio, right?
Yes. Yeah, I have no questions.
Okay, very good. Then moving on to item number five, the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
Mayor Crop, I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Excellent. Do I have a second? Support. Moves by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Hammond. Roll call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Thank you. This is the portion of the meeting where we have public participation. In order to keep things kind of moving and orderly, we will compile a list of everyone's first names. When we call on you for your time to speak, you will be unmuted, and then you will have three minutes to speak. We ask at that time that you give us your full name and your place of residence. If anyone would like to speak, if they could go ahead and give me their first name.
Sandra.
Sandra. Thank you, Sandra. Anyone else? Okay, hearing nobody else, we'll go ahead with Sandra. Sandra, go ahead and give us your full name and your address, please.
Sandra Wembley, 14 Deal Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan.
Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Sandra.
Oh, okay. I am referring to the sidewalks replacement in front of my home. And so, as at the last meeting, I state that I felt that it was three of the squares that did not belong to me. There was a tree that was there that caused those squares to be in the condition that it's in. And so I feel that it should be the responsibility of the city. I do have four total. I am accepting that fourth one. And I was wondering, was there any... Anything discussed between you all on that on my sidewalks being replaced, not by me, but by the city?
Very good. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during public participation?
Yes, Beverly LaShure.
Beverly, okay. Beverly, can you give us your address, and then you'll have three minutes?
My address is 650 Clinton River Drive.
Go ahead.
I too am speaking regarding the sidewalk repair program. There are several issues, actually. I've had several members of the River Acres community have spoken with me regarding which sidewalks were marked. Fortunately, I sent a letter in, and two of my sidewalk, my sidewalk squares were unmarked due to the minimal problem with them. Additionally, there are several people that were going to obtain their own contractors. However, our complaint and objection is that we received our letters on... I personally received my letter on September the 7th, and I was informed that work was going to begin during the week of September the 20th, which is this week. And we did not feel that that was sufficient time in order for us to obtain our contractors to fully do the work. We do understand that ordinances do allow this. I did review those. But we, as a community, are still requesting that we be allowed to get this work completed during the next four seasons. These sidewalk issues are not new. Therefore, if they have been allowed to go on for this time that they have, we are wondering what is the urgency of getting them done this four seasons? I have obtained permits for several residents that are going to use their own contractor to get the work done because we thought that this fee for this work was quite high. When you're doing a bulk of sidewalks, and we just do not understand why the fee is this exorbitant. The other issue is that many of these sidewalks could just be leveled. A couple of the residents have already gone through and had their sidewalks leveled, and we're wondering why that option was not offered to us. I know of the four of my sidewalks, three of them can just be leveled. And if that is an option, could we be notified of something to that effect?
Okay, thank you very much. Do I hear any other public participation? Hearing none, we will move to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. City Manager Johnson?
Yes, we had two speakers at the last meeting that brought up issues. The first one asked when the sidewalk program will start. Actually, today, the contractor was scheduled to start cutting sidewalks. No removals will be completed this week. And if a resident gets a sidewalk permit on or before Thursday, September 24th, we'll remove them from the list that our contractors doing, and they will not be responsible for the saw cutting cost. The final day to get a permit and not have the city's contractor do sidewalk repair is Thursday, September 24th. If you do pull a permit and have a contractor do the work, it will be inspected, and it does have to meet the city's standards. It doesn't meet the city's standards, it'll be rejected, and it'll have to be removed and replaced. On Monday, September 28th, the actual sidewalk removal is scheduled to start. I would like to make a comment on the cost issue. Our actual cost on it is more like $180 to $185 per flag. And I did a quick comparison with the numbers that were bid in Royal Oak this year, and theirs are higher than ours. They're charging $170 for four-inch sidewalk, and $190 for six-inch. Six inches is what you have at driveways. We're charging 160 regardless of location. And their bid was three times the size of our program, so it's even higher volume. So I suspect that if you've got a contractor that's offering a lower price, that they aren't going to meet specs. Another speaker asked about the ability of an ambulance to enter Shady Side Park, and an ambulance will be able to enter the park. Ambulance can simply climb the curb. That's not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the regular City Commission minutes on September 8th, 2020.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond moved. Do I have a second?
Four.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any questions? Hearing none? Roll call, please. Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to general business. Item 9A, First Reading of the Flood Plan Management. City Manager Johnson? I'm sorry, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an amendment to 21.013, Section 3, and set the second reading and adoption for October 5th, 2020.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Mensah. Do I have a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. City Manager Johnson?
I'm going to call on Community Development Director Brian Tingley. This is his report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Section 3 of the city's construction ordinance contains a language which allows us to participate in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. The city was recently provided revised flood maps and a flood insurance study that will become effective December 30th of this year. And we most recently did this process back in 2013, so they're on a six to seven-year cycle. The amendment revises the dates and panel numbers to reflect the updated maps and study, and adoption of the amendment will allow the city and residents to continue, or who reside in designated flood areas, to continue to be eligible for flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. Our city engineers reviewed the maps and stated that the city is unaffected by the updates, and the ordinance amendment has also been reviewed by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for accuracy. That's all I have.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions, comments for Mr. Tingley? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please. Fournier?
Yes.
Sorry, Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
And Fournier?
Yes.
Thank you. General Business 9B, Discussion of the Tree Ordinance. Do I have a motion, please?
Adam Mayor, this one, the motion depends on the discussion, so I think you need to go ahead with the discussion first.
Okay, why don't I hand that over to you then, and you can lead us with this opening memo here.
At the September 7th meeting, when we were reporting on the sidewalk program, it kind of bled into a discussion about the tree ordinance and possibly amending the tree ordinance to allow a resident to trim or remove a tree in the public right-of-way adjacent to the property. That was not the actual item on the agenda. I was asked to put it on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting. I've attached a copy of the tree ordinance, and I've highlighted the areas that I think would need to be changed. Jeff Wood has provided a copy of the permit form that we currently use when a resident wants to plant trees or shrubs. If we're going to need a very different form for removing a tree. If the commission does desire to allow residents to trim or remove trees in the right-of-way, we suggest the ordinance be amended to require a permit be obtained and a bond posted to be sure that the cleanup work is completed. All work should have to be performed by a licensed contractor who provides certificate of insurance, meeting the city's requirement. And if the tree is being removed, the stump must be removed as well. All debris must be hauled off. And you're realizing that with trees in the right-of-way, especially if the tree is of any size, it's going to require closing the street. So the permit needs to be specific as to when the work may occur and when the street needs to be reopened to minimize traffic disruptions. The ordinance is attached or follows. I suggest you take a look at it, discuss it, and if you want to proceed with this, and if you agree with what I provided, just direct the city attorney to provide, to draft into an amendment to the ordinance. But if you want to make some changes, put that into it.
Thank you. Okay, we had several commissioners who attended a meeting at Shady Side Park, not several, two commissioners and myself attended a meeting at Shady Side for River Acres Neighborhood, and this was definitely a topic. And this topic seems to come up every time the sidewalk program begins. So obviously, it's something that commissioners themselves have dealt with. So why don't we go ahead and open it up to discussion?
I am in favor of changing the ordinance for a homeowner to be able to remove a tree that's in the right-of-way. It's been expressed to me by several residents how they feel about the same situation. Other commissioners have expressed issues with the trees as well. So I'm definitely in favor of changing the ordinance.
I have to agree with Commissioner Hammond. I am in agreement with that. But I would ask if we could somehow push the time back for when the trees can be removed. That was one of the discussions that we had at the River Acres meeting. And it's not that they do not want to follow the ordinance. They would just like more time to properly plan to financially plan to have those trees removed. So if we could allow them to begin in the spring to remove the trees, that would be something that I would like to see, to be honest.
I think, I'm sorry, I think that's something different. I think they want to put back the sidewalk program.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Remember, they wanted to, they didn't have a problem with getting their own contractor. They just wanted to know if it could be pushed back until the spring.
Yeah, that's a sidewalk program.
Okay.
Yeah. So right now, one of all we're covering is if people, even if you have nothing to do with the sidewalk program, but you want to, you have a tree in your easement, at this time, our ordinance reads you're not allowed to trim it, or you're not allowed to remove it.
Right, right.
So right now, that's all we're discussing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So anyone else have any thoughts on this one?
Yeah, I would like to...
Commissioner Mensah, I heard you first.
I would like to ask Mr. Wood, under what circumstances at this point does the city pay for tree removal within that right-of-way?
What... I guess I don't understand. When do we pay for it, or when do we actually...
Well, when does, when does, when does the city, what circumstances does the city use to determine that they will take down a tree that's in the public right-of-way? And that, and it's not done at the resident's expense?
So they're, they're currently, if the tree is dead, dead or diseased and dying, if it's not, not healthy, obviously, if a homeowner is, say, replacing a sewer, and the tree is in, in the way of sewer replacement, or, or a water, water service line replacement. But we do not remove healthy trees from the right-of-way just because a resident doesn't want the tree anymore, or, or what, what have you. If there's nothing to matter with the tree, or no reason for it to be removed, we do not remove it.
Okay, that clarifies it. Thank you.
If I understand that correctly, the tree will not be removed by the city if it is pushing up the sidewalk. That's correct, Mr. Wood?
That's correct.
So that is, I think, why this makes sense, to allow, since the resident is responsible for the sidewalk and any replacement to the sidewalk, and wants to make that decision to take down the tree, I believe that they should have that right to do so.
Mr. Wood, how, how long is the waiting list right now for tree removal and tree trimming?
We are, we typically, every September, we, we work Saturdays on overtime to try and address that list. We are whittling that, that list down. It's not...
That was a good pun.
Yeah, still. Yeah. So we're, we're, we're getting there. It's, it's not super lengthy at this point.
Okay. Does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Wood or City Manager? I haven't heard from a few commissioners in the week. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Voorhees?
I mean, because if Mr. Wood is fine with it, I guess there's no problem with it. If Mr. Wood says it's okay, it's a wrap, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. If Jeff considers it okay, it's fine.
I feel like we, in my opinion, I think we have to have some pretty specific parameters on it. I know you mentioned, in the, in the recommendation to us, that, you know, there be a specific license and insurance involved. And I mean, I don't want this to just be a free-for-all. I think that people should have to apply for, you know, a permit to have it taken down.
I believe that was part of the proposal.
Right, exactly. I was, I'm glad it's put that way.
You especially need a permit in this case because this is going to affect traffic. Bring, you can't bring one of these trees down and leave the street open while you do it safely.
Right, right, of course. Okay. All right. Anyone else have any thoughts or questions?
Yeah, we actually haven't heard Mr. Wood say that he agrees or disagrees with this proposed ordinance change.
Mr. Wood?
Well, I mean, you know, it, I think it's, if you're, if you're asking my opinion, which I don't think really matters in this circumstance, but it's, it's quite a, it's quite a drastic change. I don't know. You know, it's going to, it's certainly going to affect tree planting grants. It's going to affect your Tree City USA status. You know, the, the, there's, there's a lot of push to keep green and trees in, in municipalities. And I think for reasons of, of it hindering a sidewalk flag is not an appropriate response for a removal of a healthy tree.
Well, the alternative for me would be the city pays for the sidewalk that the tree is pushing up?
I agree with Commissioner Hammond.
I would agree too with both of them. I think that if the tree is causing the problem, then if the resident has no right over the tree, has no... I see good sidewalk flags within a couple of years pushed back up because of these very, very, very large trees. And I love the trees. I would want to understand, if you will, how it's going, it's going to affect us as Tree City. I think we still have a very strict ordinance as to what you can plant. I think that this just gives residents an option to, okay, if you don't want to deal with the sidewalk issues caused by the tree, you can pay to take it down. And I, and as long as they have to get permits and be subject to the approval of the city, I don't see where the, the problem is.
I think you need, we need to be reminded that if you are having flags replaced, I had four of them replaced last year. I had, the DPS came and ground down the tree roots that were causing the sidewalk flags to, you know, to, I guess buckle, would be the word. So that can be done, and the city took care of that at no expense to me. I just paid for the flags.
The roots grow back, though?
Yes, they do.
And does anyone have any further questions or comments? I'll need a motion either way, either to close discussion or to, I guess we don't need a motion to close discussion, but I need some kind of, if we are going to move on this at all, then we need to have a motion presented because we don't have one currently.
I would like to recommend that the city attorney be directed to prepare an amended tree ordinance incorporating the requirements suggested by administration.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Fournier, supported by Commissioner Hammond. Any further questions? Roll call, please. Hammond?
Yes.
Crump?
Yes.
Mensah?
No.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Based off Mr. Wood's recommendation, I'm voting no.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, excellent. So just to clarify, we are not voting on an ordinance at the moment. We are voting to have our city attorney work on that amendment. Okay, moving on to number, sorry, 9B, Smart Funding Agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the contract between the City of Mount Clemens and the Suburban Mobile Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, or SMART, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Mensah. Do I have a support?
Four.
I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Fournier?
Yes.
Okay. Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Mr. Johnson?
This is Mr. Wood's report, so I'm going to call on him to present it.
So this, this agreement is, is one that we've had before. This is a grant that we received before. It just covers the, helps cover some of the costs of operation for what we call the shopper route for seniors and disabled.
Okay, excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wood on the senior shopper and the smart grant?
This is a matching grant, right? We put in 45, they put in 45?
Yes, but it's, it's through in-kind services. So our 45 is our cost to, well, a portion of our cost to run the program.
Okay. And then my favorite part of this contract is always is the lobbying certification. I just get a big kick out of that. Okay, and, and then my favorite part of this contract is always is the lobbying certification. I just get a big kick out of that.
Okay, anyone else?
A member of Congress may benefit from this.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
It's seven thirty.
Here, correct?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Gooden?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine D, revise the two thousand twenty twenty-one budget. City Manager Johnson?
Thank you. You should have, uh, the budget document on your screen right now.
Yes.
And I'm going to kind of walk you through it a little bit, and then we'll take some questions and talk about what the process is from this point. Start with the vision statement, the uptown of Macomb County. Uh, I'll note that uptown was a very deliberate choice by city commissioners who debated at some length whether we wanted to be referred to it as the downtown or the uptown. Permission statement is to provide ethical effective leadership and municipal services that enhance the quality of life for our inclusive community. I think understanding this chart, which appears on two slides, it's, it's on one page in the book, will be a great help to understanding Mount Clemens accounting and Mount Clemens budgeting. Here on this page, you see the funds that use modified accrual accounting. Modified accrual is sometimes referred to as a cross between full accrual accounting and cash-based accounting. And we'll get into some specifics on the differences in about two or three more slides. But you can see on this page that the general fund, the special revenue funds, which includes major street, local street, dial or ride, public improvement, uh, and also the TIF and DDA, and the capital projects fund, which is just sidewalks and debt services, all are accounted for on the modified accrual basis. On the accrual basis, we have the enterprise funds, which include parking, sewage, water, solid waste in the ice arena, internal service, which is only the motor pool, fiduciary funds, including retirement, OPEB, tax collection funds and payroll clearing are all done on an accrual basis. So what's the difference? Well, in modified accrual, you have no capital assets recorded and no depreciation. Instead, we use capital outlay accounts to fully expend long-lived assets at the time of their purchase. Revenue is recognized when it's available and measurable. In practical terms, that means revenue that we know is coming and that will be here within sixty days. Expenditures are recognized when, when incurred, just like on an accrual basis. Again, this affects the general fund, special revenue funds, capital projects funds, and debt service funds. Full accrual is basically standard business accounting. Assets are capitalized and depreciated. Revenue is recognized when it's earned. Expenses are recognized when they're incurred. And for us, this affects enterprise funds, internal service funds, and fiduciary funds. The bottom line in these two types of funds, or at least these two sites of systems, is different. In the modified accrual funds, the, the bottom line is fund balance. And it's usually composed of cash and liquid assets. In the full accrual funds, the bottom line is net assets. This will be in the enterprise funds, internal service, and fiduciary. And it's often mostly capital assets such as physical plant, which could be pipes in the ground, could be vehicles, and it's very possible to have significant net assets and be out of cash. This slide shows a summary of revenue and expenditures citywide. I think it's noteworthy that taxes only comprise twenty-nine percent of the city's revenue. Licenses, charges, and fines, and the bulk of that is charges, comprised forty-five percent. Grants comprise eighteen percent. And in this case, the big grants or the big things that are categorized as grants are state shared revenue in the general fund, Act fifty-one dispersments to the major street and local street funds. On the expenditure side, forty-six percent is going to public works of some sort. Now, that's including things like the water plant, sewage system, sewage treatment plant, the pipes in the ground and the that system, as well as street maintenance and park maintenance. This actually turns it into numbers. And you can see the organization of how we're structured and, and what the numbers are in total. Uh, we've got a grand total revenue of twenty-six point seven million dollars, grand total expenditures of twenty-seven million. When we move to the general fund, now this is the fund that actually gets most tax revenue. And it's often the fund that most people think about when they think about the city. And the general fund taxes comprise sixty-one percent, grants twenty-seven, and again, the big grant is state shared revenue. Charges, licenses, and fines are about nine percent, and other items, one percent. Uh, on the expenditure side, public safety is forty-three percent of the general fund budget. That includes the fire department and the contracts we have with Macomb County for the Sheriff's Department Services for both patrol and for dispatch. General government comprises sixteen percent. That's basically the departments you see in City Hall. Transfers out and other uses are nineteen percent. Other, which includes insurance and benefits, about eleven percent. And economic development, about five. And here we can see that we're dealing with a twenty-six point seven million dollar. I'm sorry, I'm reading the total budget. This is the same slide we showed before, but let's just look at the general fund column. We see total revenue of about eleven point two and expenditures of about twelve million. Uh, so we're showing a change in fund balance or net assets of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The general fund is the largest and most important fund of the city. It receives most property tax revenue, but not quite all. It receives the state revenue sharing. There are relatively few restrictions on expenditures. These things are up to the city commission, how we spend general fund money and the general operating levy. When we get to the street funds and the Act fifty-one monies, those have to be spent on street construction and street maintenance. As I said a minute ago, police, the sheriff's contract, fire, general government, parks, and miscellaneous activities are all accounted for here. The eight hundred thousand dollar loss in this fund actually includes a five hundred thousand dollar transfer to the OPEB trust per the Michigan Department of Treasury Corrective Action Plan. Uh, and that falls to a hundred and eighty thousand next year and continues at that level until twenty forty-five. It also includes a five hundred thousand dollar transfer to the sidewalk safety fund based on actions taken at the last commission meeting. Provide the working capital so we can do two more sidewalk districts in twenty twenty-one in the spring. Uh, most of this money will eventually come back to the general fund at the conclusion of the project and the payment of, of the special assessments. The city does remain responsible for the portion we're subsidizing, uh, which is about twenty thousand dollars of, uh, I'm sorry, but about twenty dollars a flag, about a hundred and eighty versus a hundred and sixty. Also, we're responsible for the, the ramps that go down to the street. At the end of the, each sidewalk section, uh, we're responsible for sidewalk that's adjacent to city property. And we're also responsible for sidewalk that has other city infrastructure located within it, such as a manhole cover. Our beginning fund balance was just a little bit over seven million dollars, which is about sixty-three percent of annual revenue. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada recommends that cities maintain a minimum fund balance equal to two months expenditures, which comes out to about sixteen point seven percent. So we're almost three times the minimum recommendation. I wouldn't suggest that we try to approach the minimum. I think we should always try to keep this at at least twenty-five percent. Special revenue funds. Special revenue funds, uh, here the primary revenue source is taxes. Grants equal about one point seven million dollars or sixty-three percent of the revenue. Taxes, about twenty percent. Charges, about four percent, transfers, eight percent. On the expenditure side, it's mostly public works, a little bit of general government. This, of course, is because the, the biggest special revenue funds are the street funds. Here we can see the, the actual dollar amounts in each of the special revenue funds. And you'll see the street funds. Most of these are all balanced. Uh, the DDA is actually going to be adding to fund balance by about thirty-two thousand. Special revenue source. Special revenue funds are classified as special revenue because they have a dedicated revenue source that can only be used for a particular dedicated purpose, and they must be accounted for separately. Uh, street funds receive a portion of gas and weight tax. The weight tax is the regi, part of the registration fee you pay when you register your vehicle, get your license plates. It's collected by the state. Uh, we receive a portion based on a formula, and it can only be used for street construction and street maintenance. Dial-a-ride has two dedicated revenues, a tax, and it also receives dedicated money through SMART. Both can only be used to support the local bus transportation system. Uh, DDA and TIF revenue can only be spent within the boundary of the Downtown Development Authority. Street funds, you can see ninety-six percent of the revenue is grants. It's all coming from, from the state under Act fifty-one. You'll notice that there is zero tax revenue going into the street funds. Major street fund has a one point nine million dollar fund balance against about one point two-five annual revenue. So it's funded at about a hundred and fifty-seven percent ratio. Local street fund has a one point three million dollar fund balance, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar annual revenue, so it's funded at a two hundred and eighty-three percent ratio. In spite of that, these balances and the, the revenue coming in is really very much inadequate to fund our street needs. Uh, the only reason we have large balances here at, at the present is because, uh, we haven't spent it to do projects, because most projects will cost more. Street funds are almost totally funded by gas and weight taxes. A gas tax assessment, when you buy gasoline at the pump, the weight tax is part of your registration fee, and local governments receive a portion based on population and miles of streets. In Mount Clemens, we have no local property tax dedicated to streets, and we have no general contribution to and no contribution from other funds either. Dial, I, Dial-a-ride has a dedicated tax of point eight 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 seven mils, which generates three hundred and three thousand one hundred dollars and grants of a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. The DDA and the Tax Increment Financing Authority, the DDA is technically considered a component unit of the city. It's a legally separate organization, but the city's financially accountable. Their statements appear in our financial statements, and the city commi, commission appoints the DDA Board of Directors. Uh, DDA fund has two sides to it. There's the, the DDA and the, and the, and the TIF. On the DDA side, there is a tax levy of one point five seven six eight, which applies only to properties within the DDA district, and it only generates forty-three thousand six hundred dollars. The tax increment financing revenue uses tax increment capture from other taxing authorities, amounts to about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars this year. Uh, the way this worked is the base taxure was nineteen eighty-five. The various taxing authorities keep the taxes that were their current tax rates levied against that base taxable value, that nineteen eighty-five value. The TIF captures the taxes levied on the taxable value growth since the, since the base year. So to the extent that a property has increased in value, uh, the DDA captures the taxes that are levied against it. Uh, there are some exceptions. Uh, school taxes were originally part of, uh, the capture, but those were exempted uh, many years ago. Uh, and when the DIA and the those were exempted from capture. Enterprise fund revenue is almost all, uh, charges. Uh, there's a small tax, uh, that comes into the solid waste fund. Expenditures are done here by object because pretty much if I did it by function, it would almost all be, uh, public works. Personal services amount to twenty-seven percent, uh, debts about ten percent, capital outlay sixteen percent, and other forty-two percent. And here we have the, the schedule of enterprise funds. And this is one you'll see, uh, the, the net asset number is very high, but that net asset number is basically real estate, buildings, vehicles, equipment, pipe in the ground. It's not mostly cash. Enterprise funds operate like a business and use standard business accounting to include the automobile parking system, the sewage disposal system, water supply system, solid waste in the ice arena. They charge fees for services provided, and they're expected to at least break even. Parking fund, uh, revenue is down significantly due to COVID nineteen. It's going to need some short-term help with cash flow. Uh, but it's going to take care of itself in a couple of years because there's a debt issue, uh, which debt service is four hundred and ten thousand dollars this year will be paid off in July of twenty twenty-three. Water supply system, uh, debt service requirements declined by almost half a million dollars this year. And next year, another hundred and twenty-three thousand of debt service will drop off. Uh, this will enable, uh, long deferred maintenance to occur. We do have a study of the water plant by an outside engineering firm, which is still incomplete. We don't know how much money yet we need to invest into the water plant. Uh, we also have a liability hanging over our heads, uh, because the state is making the city and all, uh, water service providers responsible for replacing privately owned lead water service lines. And we have no idea how many of those there are or what the cost of that will be at this time. The lead service line, uh, the service line is the line that goes between your house and the water main in the street. It's actually owned by the homeowner, but in this particular case, we're being told that the city's going to have to replace any that are found to be made out of lead. Sewage disposal system also saw some significant decline in debt service, one point one million dollars for twenty twenty-one, which should also enable long-deferred maintenance to occur. Ice Arena revenue was hard hit by COVID- nineteen. The commission has authorized advancing up to a hundred thousand dollars from the General Fund, which will be repaid by the Ice Arena Fund. And that is for basically operating needs. The Ice Arena has capital needs, which we have talked about before. The compressors need to be replaced, the roof needs to be replaced, be replaced, and the parking lot needs to be resurfaced. We're planning a bond issue, and we will have, I believe we have it scheduled for the next meeting to talk to you about the bond issue and ask you to pass a resolution of intent. Motor Pool. Motor Pool is an intergovernmental service fund. An intergovernmental service fund is basically the same thing as an enterprise fund, except the only customers of the system are other funds of the city. So in this case, mostly major street and local street rent vehicles on an hourly basis from Motor Pool. They do this because it's required by the state through Act Fifty-One. The state actually provides us with the rental rates too, based on the type of vehicle that's being used. Because we have a motor pool fund, we have also put other equipment into that fund that isn't rented on an hourly basis, that's instead rented on a monthly or annual basis to some other departments of the city. But overall, a motor pool is extremely underfunded. Cash and other liquid assets equal about three point three percent of accumulated depreciation. We don't even have enough money in that fund to replace one heavy-duty dump truck, which would cost about a hundred and fifty thousand. I think we've got about a hundred and thirty there. So this is something that we need to develop a plan for how we're going to fund vehicles and other equipment. This has to be considered one of the high priority problems that we need to face. Sidewalk Safety Fund. We're projecting to complete three districts in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. District Three, we're working on right now. We'll be working on districts four and five in the spring. For budget purposes, we've assumed working capital needs of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per district. Most of that will be recovered when residents are billed, because we're going to offer special assessments that will delay that cash recovery. We are still assuming that about one-third of the sidewalk costs will be paid for upfront. The city is ultimately responsible for sidewalks adjacent to city property, sidewalk ramps, sidewalk flags with other infrastructures such as a manhole, and we're also responsible for the portion by which we're subsidizing the residents' costs. Pension and OPEB. This is a tale of two cities. The Pension Fund is extremely well-funded. For general employees, we're ninety-eight point nine percent funded. For police and fire employees, we're eighty-eight point three percent funded. We still mention police because we have retired police officers, even though we no longer have any active police officers. And we are not funding retirement for the Sheriff's Department, at least through our system. We the payments we make to the sheriff under their contract are, I'm sure, partially used to fund their retirement system. On average, municipal retirement systems in Michigan are seventy-one percent funded, so we can see we are way above average. Other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, also known as retiree healthcare. This is another story entirely. We had no pre-funding at all for retiree healthcare until twenty fifteen, when a small amount was funded. On the June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, OPEB actuarial report, we were zero point three nine percent funded. The Department of Treasury required that we present a corrective action plan. And the city did present a plan, which the Department of Treasury accepted. That called for a fifty thousand dollar extra contribution in twenty nineteen. When I say extra, that's over and above the cost of actually paying for current retiree healthcare on a pay-as-you-go basis. And we also agreed to pay a half a million dollars extra in twenty, it should say twenty twenty, not twenty ten, in twenty twenty-one. So that's last fiscal year and this fiscal year. It goes down to a hundred and eighty thousand a year next year and remains at that level until twenty forty-five. COVID. We still don't have a real good handle on exactly how much COVID is going to cost us. The impact on revenue is going to be far greater than the impact on expenditures in two ways. One, it's in just gross amounts, it'll be much higher. But also, we can recover most of the additional expenditures through various grant programs, most significantly the CARES Act. We've already recovered over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of payroll related to COVID. There are no programs available right now that will help us make up for lost revenue. So as I see it, the major challenges that we have ahead of us are fixing our streets, dealing with OPEB or retiree healthcare funding, dealing with motor pool funding, and dealing with capital needs. For the Ice Arena, we've already identified three major capital needs, and we plan to present a bond issue to the commission at the next meeting. Other buildings, we have not completed an analysis of other buildings yet, but that's one of our goals for this fiscal year. And I'm certain that there's going to be significant capital needs there. Our staffing is very inadequate for a lot of the things we're trying to accomplish, and it's very easy to forget how lightly we are staffed. Essentially, when it comes to maintaining the streets and the parks and various DPS work that we might ask Jeff's crew to do, he's got a total of five people available to do it. We have a big, potentially big liability for replacing lead service lines. We have no idea how many lead service lines we have, and we don't know how much it will cost to replace them. I'm told that the state will be offering some kind of financing program to assist with that. And apparently, they're going to spread it out over as much as twenty years to actually do that. At this point, I'd like to take any questions we've got about the presentation and about the budget book. And then we'll get into where we go from here.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Johnson or Mason?
Yes. On page twenty-three of the budget book that you gave us, it said that this document does not include fiduciary funds such as the retirement system, OPEB healthcare, the tax collection funds, but we just saw a nice presentation on that. So I'm not clear on where that money is in this present, in the budget books that we received. In addition, I'm, you want to answer that question first?
Yeah, I talk about them because they represent a problem that we're going to have to face, but we don't actually budget those funds.
Okay. I'm confused because there are several differences between the budget that we received in April. Originally, revenue was projected at eleven million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, and today you've got eleven million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. That's a three hundred and nine thousand dollar difference. So I'm confused about that. I'm also confused about the expenditures. Public safety went up a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Transfers went up five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but the public works money went down two hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, essentially, we essentially started over from where we were. If you actually follow in the budget book, when you get back to the department budget sections, you can see the department budget, which essentially represents what you saw before, and the proposed budget, which is the revised version.
I'm concerned that there's a change in the net assets at the sewage treatment plant of a hundred and four thousand dollars. I'm concerned that there's a decrease in revenue at the water fund of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. I'm concerned that you just listed all of these major areas of concern, and yet we voted for, some people voted for a point two five five four tax decrease. That's not going to help any of these major issues. I'm confused by the sudden seventy-four thousand dollar increase to the City Manager Community Promotion Fund. I'm concerned that under accounting, accounting and auditing service, the same forty-five thousand dollars is in both accounts. Auditing services have moved from accounting to account administration, but it still shows up in under auditing services. There's a decrease in infotech of fifteen thousand dollars with no explanation. The tax tribunal refunds were zero, and now they're twenty thou.
Commissioner, did you want Mr. Johnson to respond to these, or did you want a listing?
You can take your spit, because I've got more.
Okay, can I just make one comment? Do you mind, Commissioner Menzger? It seems to me on this budget, we were looking for a good overhaul, and that is why it was delayed. We didn't receive these budget books till Friday of last week, for myself, that was a problem. I think for some others, that was a problem. So to be able to go through the entire book and really understand it, I haven't had, I personally haven't had that opportunity. I appreciate you're putting this into a presentation format that we needed, and especially for new commissioners, because it is very difficult to understand that budget book. But to expect us to go through it overnight, especially when you've made changes, and there are different ways of presenting it, is very difficult. So as I've mentioned to you before, I cannot support this tonight. I need an opportunity to go through it. And I think that a lot of Commissioner Menzger's questions, some of which are also my questions.
This Sam was so good. If I can remind everyone, if you aren't speaking, if you could mute yourself so we don't get the background noise, that would be great. Thank you.
And quite honestly, slapping up here on next steps that the budget needs to be adopted by September thirtieth annoys the every living daylights out of me, because when we talked about this back in June or May, how often we said we wanted to have discussion. We should have had this first meeting in a work session where we could all learn, ask questions, and make sure we understood this whole thing. So I for one believe we need that meeting.
And I agree with you, but I would also like to see the line item budget from BSNA.
If it's materially different than the last one, I agree. I haven't had a chance to sit down to make that comparison, but I agree. Because there's not much, while the presentation is very, very good, I think we need to get to some presentation-oriented way of presenting this budget. There's a lot of questions about the cost. We can't just lump everything into other and figure it out.
I agree. I think we have, we're kind of used to the line items. And again, I like the presentation, but I need to know what the backup was to these numbers. So if Cliff can run those off, again, I'd be more than happy to deliver them. But I do believe we need those, the line items.
Okay, so I'm hearing, I'm hearing that we need to schedule another work, either work session or probably a special meeting in case we need to take some action. Mr. Johnson will behoove you to schedule that for, I'm assuming you would need it late this week or early, very early next week?
Actually, we could do it, I believe, as soon as Wednesday.
Well, I'm going to be out of town. I do, I do feel that we need the line item book. That material needs to come to us.
That's no problem. I can have that for you tomorrow morning.
Well, unfortunately, I won't be able to deliver it, so you'll have to have somebody else deliver it, but I do believe, I do believe that we need that that line item book.
And we have to have a chance to look through it and review it. Otherwise, it's meaningless.
Can we do this? Can we extend the existing expenditure authority for two weeks or until the next commission meeting, October fifth? And that'll give you an opportunity to get that to us at least a week, you know, or a week and a half prior to October fifth, and we can do it then.
Can we have a work session now before the actual commission meeting?
Right, but we can extend the expenditure authority.
Yes, okay, that makes sense.
But I'd like it to be clear that we don't want this type of discussion in a general meeting. We'd like it to be a separate meeting.
Yes, I agree.
When would you like to hold the work session?
I think I'm hearing October fifth. Is that the case, is everyone, or is that not?
What day is that?
That's next commission meeting. It's a Monday.
The work session, if we could do it a little before that, it might be able to, in case there are issues, they can be, or changes or whatever, we could, then they could be done for the meeting.
Well, there is an entire week. I mean, we have the twenty-eighth through the second that we could host, we could hold a meeting. I mean, if you have, I mean, we need at least a quorum, but it would be best if we could have everyone, but understandably, people have plans.
Is the twenty-eighth a possible date?
It is for me.
It is for me.
It's Tuesday?
It's a Monday. It's next Monday.
I can, I can do that date, but Commissioner Voorhees, are you out for that?
No, I'll be, I'll be back. So the twenty-eighth of, that's Monday, correct? Yes, that'll be fine. That would be a special meeting?
Right.
Is that during the day?
It would be in the evening.
In the evening, okay.
Commissioner Hammond, haven't heard from you, or Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, I have, like a special meeting or work session, and I'm available on the twenty eighth.
Wonderful. Mr. Campbell, how about you?
That's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Hammond, you had questions, but does it Okay, Commissioner Hammond, you had questions, but does it, does it work for you in the evening?
That was from Commissioner.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Goodenough.
Yes, that does. That's fine.
Okay. Okay.
Do you need a motion to extend the expenditure authority until the fifth?
Well, if we're having a meeting on the twenty eighth, we could do that then if it doesn't, if it, if we, because if it's a special meeting, we could do it then instead of a work session, as long as we schedule.
We can't vote.
We can. We can in a special meeting. That's why I said it should be a special meeting instead of a work session.
I would really like to see a work session where people are more comfortable discussing and asking questions and. Kind of getting.
Are you asking for an in-person work session then, or are you, I mean, because it would still be Zoom, if it would be this format as a work session, just unable to vote?
I would rather do work session. On the twenty eighth.
So are we, I'll ask again, are we asking for an in-person work session?
I would like that if possible.
Mr. City Manager Johnson, is that, I mean, we did that for a strategic planning session.
We tried to do it, but I considered it a total failure. The people who were trying to. Participate remotely couldn't hear anything that was going on.
Okay, so we don't have the capability of fixing that issue?
Patrick has a piece of equipment on order that we think might let us fix it, but we have no idea when that's going to arrive.
Okay, I believe that, I guess at this point, our options are then in order to. You know, if we know we have an issue with public participation, in order to abide by the Open Meetings Act, then we have to continue to be virtual. Is that what? The conclusion of that is?
I'm afraid so.
If we could schedule a meeting, that gives us a week and we could probably assemble on a short, as long as we know that's the night of the meeting. If we can work towards perhaps having an in-person meeting. That's a whole week. Things can come in, things can happen during that time.
Okay, is it, are we clear with where we're headed then? Mr. Johnson, do you want us to extend the authority before?
Well, it depends. If you're going to call this as a special meeting, we could wait, but if you're going to call it as a work session, I would need the authority now.
Okay. It sounds like two commissioners would like it to be a work session. Do I have? You know, consensus from the others?
I'll go ahead with the work session.
I'm on board with the work session too as well.
Work, yes, work session.
Okay, very good. So we will move then, we'll need a motion then to extend. Budget as is, I'm sorry. As it currently stands, correct?
Oh, I would like to motion that.
Mr. Murray, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mentor, just hang on one second. I'm getting, Mr. Murray, I think needs to advise us on something.
Well. You have an existing expenditure authority. That expires on September thirtieth. That's my understanding. That, that date was picked by the administration three months ago. So I would think the proper motion would be to extend. The expenditure authority to whatever date. You decide upon. That's what I would think the motion should be.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Mentor.
I would like to make a motion that we extend the administration's expenditure authority until October fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Support. Thank you. Commission, moved by Commissioner Mentor, supported by Commissioner Fournier. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mentor.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to nine E, approval of purchases and payments and invoices.
Move approved purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Campbell. Do I have a support?
Support. Lots of support.
Okay, so I have, sorry, moved by Commissioner Campbell, supported by Commissioner Fournier. Any questions? Okay, and hearing none, I will call please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Goodenough.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
Mentor.
Yes.
Agenda, item number ten, consent agenda. There's nothing underneath our consent agenda this evening, so we'll move on to agenda. Agenda item eleven, city managers report. City Manager Johnson.
Thank you. We've got nothing significant with executive orders. The state of emergency expired on Saturday, September nineteenth, a local state of emergency, ours. We have not needed to utilize any extraordinary emergency powers in months, so I'm not requesting a renewal. The state of Michigan is still under a state of emergency, however, and I expect that will remain so, probably for several more months. Hybrid meetings, we were just talking about. We've been asked about holding hybrid commission meetings where some are all commissioners meet in person, but most staff and the public continue to connect via Zoom. Our one attempt to do this utilizing cell phone and laptop cameras during the second strategic planning session was a failure. Staff members in the public connecting remotely were unable to hear commissioners. Patrick has a piece of equipment on order, which we think might solve the sound and picture problems. By allowing him to use his cable cameras with Zoom. We think this may make a successful hybrid meeting possible. I'd like to be able to test it with staff before we try it with a real meeting. But again, we have no idea when this is going to arrive. Firefighter hiring status, conditional probationary offers of employment have been made to three firefighter candidates. In addition to providing documentation of EMT license status, firefighter one and two certification. And possessing a valid CPAT certificate, each candidate must undergo a psychological exam. Firefighter physical and a respirator fit test in order, in that order, in addition to other background checks. All three candidates are making progress in their pre-employment process with two psychological examinations taking place this past week. And the remaining one scheduled to be completed by the end of this week. Candidates must pass the psych exam before having the physical. Sidewalks, we talked about earlier today, saw cutting was scheduled to start today. Residents choosing to do the work themselves or with their own contractor still have until four thirty on Thursday to obtain a permit. There is no fee for that permit. And on Monday, September twenty eighth, removal of existing sidewalk will begin. We will be reading a report back on special assessments for sidewalk repairs, probably for the October fifth meeting. I am still looking for one report from our engineer before we make a final decision. As to how long we want to recommend that special assessments can be carried. I don't know how big of assessments any. Individuals are receiving yet. How many flags any individuals have yet? We should have that very shortly. Other than that, we've got the upcoming agendas and what we have scheduled at the current time. Of course, these things change, items get moved, items get added. All the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the portion, the second portion of the meeting where we allow public participation. If you would like to get in line for public participation, we'll take your, we will take your name, your first name. When it is your turn, we will ask you for your full name and your address and have you abide by our rule. Would there, would anyone like to participate in public participation?
Yes, George.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing none, hearing no one else, George, go ahead and give us your full name, your address, and we'll give you that.
Thank you, Mayor Crop, George Kale, one eighty grand, they have. In regard to the budget specific to the DDA and the TIFA funding that City Manager had gone over. I'd like to know what that total amount of revenue capture has been for the DDA since that base tax year of nineteen eighty-five. If there's a running tally somehow, or if we could get that number. It'd be greatly appreciated, especially since we've got the special city commission meeting on October fifth, specific to extending the life of the DDA. I appreciate that information and thank you very much.
Thank you. One last call for public participation.
Yes, Beverly LeShure.
Okay, go ahead, Beverly, your address, please, and. And your, and we'll give you two minutes. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, my address is six fifty Clinton River Drive. My question is, buildings with a five oh one. C three. Are they also responsible for their. With the sidewalk repair program? Is that not something that the city is responsible to replace those sidewalks? I thought they would be exempt. Additionally. The HUD housing units. Are they, is, is the HUD authority, are they responsible for replacement of those? Sidewalk flags for those units?
Okay.
I have one other, one other point, and I apologize for interrupting.
Nope, sorry, I think we just got some backfeed there. Go ahead.
Okay. Is there anything available for the senior members that are homeowners? I don't know if that is a normal process with the city, but I know we have several senior members in our communities. And if there's anything available, possibly a payment program or something to that effect. Can I get that information from the city offices? I would be happy to pick it up for any residents that I'm aware of, of course. So that they'll know what their options are. That completes my.
Great, thank you, Beverly. I believe that if we can get your contact info, if you can maybe send it to me in the chat. Or to City Manager Johnson in the chat. We'll have somebody give you a call tomorrow with several of these answers, because I know some of them are timely.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone? Do we have anyone else waiting for public participation? Hearing none, we'll move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
I just want to say, this whole budget thing was kind of confusing, and I met with Mr. Basin. And he was very helpful in clearing up some of the things, but. It was very confusing, so I want to thank him for his help. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodenough.
Um, I just wanted to say that I look forward to working with everyone on the budget. I'm sure it's going to be very interesting to unpack all the information that's there and so that the. Mount Clemens can see where the money is going. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you. I would like to also agree with Beverly LeShure that the residents and Rivers Acres did receive a short notice for the sidewalk program. I believe it was only a two-week notice. And I would just like the city to, in the future for the sidewalk program, to give more advanced notice to the residents. Along with. Tomorrow, Tuesday, September twenty second. Greater Monaster Baptist Church will be distributing food from one to three o'clock, and that's at eighty-seven Robinson. And they will be doing that every Tuesday into the end of the year. And again, that's at Greater Monaster, Missionary Baptist Church on eighty-seven Robinson. And that's all I have.
Did you call? Me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, my sound was going in and out.
That's okay.
I agree with Commissioner Hammond and the residents that it is important for the sidewalk program, to be fair, is that they get. Adequate notice and two weeks seems pretty tough, especially trying to get a contractor if they want to compare prices. At this time of year, so we do need to get notices out sooner. That's just fair. Secondly. I do want to commend. The city and Mr. Johnson for putting out, trying to put this budget. Information into an informative. Package. Previously, getting those budget books, it was just. There was no, nothing, no color around it, no comments. It just was very frustrating. So I do appreciate the effort that went into this. But I do believe that we have to have sufficient time to discuss it, and so I look forward to our session on the twenty eighth. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Mentor.
The vets from the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Andreas Post seventeen ninety-four in Mount Clemens will be selling puppies. To motorists to raise money for the post welfare fund. They're going to be working with the AmVets. And they will be doing a drive-through collection this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from ten AM to five PM. And that's at the, that's at the AmVets Post on one AmVets Drive, south of Crocker, east and northbound Maine. And there will be vets there stationed under a freestanding canopy. That's right by the rec bowl, for those of you that. Are familiar with the rec bowl. The Mount Clemens Optimist Club was thrilled to finally have an in-person meeting last Thursday. At Miller Brothers, we socially distanced outside at the picnic tables. We collected school supplies for the Mount Clemens Public School System. We collected twenty-five backpacks full of school supplies, binders and notebooks and pencils and. You know, glue and crayons and, and all kinds of stuff. Twenty-five full backpacks, and we collected some bags of extra supplies. But in talking with Mrs. Monk, and we did collect money, and in talking with Mrs. Monk, when I asked her, what did she want? To supplement that, what did she want us to spend the collection, the collection of cash gifts on? She said hand sanitizer. So luckily enough, we were in the right place at the right time, and we were able to buy. One hundred and forty-four bottles of hand sanitizer for the kids in the Mount Clemens Public Schools. The Optimist Club is also reminding you that the little free libraries are full and, you know, read a book, take a book, keep a book. Replace a book. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes, once again, we need to make sure that we are doing our census. That is so important for funding and representation for the city of Mount Clemens. I too want to compliment Mr. Johnson on the budget booklet. Unfortunately, I'm a little maybe anal with this, and I, and I like to have the. Unfortunately, I'm a little maybe anal with this, and I, and I like to have the, the line items so that I know where these figures come from. But I, the, the booklet certainly can be used out in the general public. It's got a lot of good information in it. And with that, once a clemite, always a clemite.
Excellent, thank you. I too would like to just mention that I thought the budget presentation was a, was a presentation, and I appreciated that. I feel like in years past, we've had many times where it was, here's the book, and we'll go through it, you know, line item by line item, but it's difficult to kind of put all the pieces together without seeing some images and flow charts and things that really help visualize the story behind the budget. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to the further conversations. I think with these larger issues, like the bond issue coming up, you know, I think it's so important that the commission really have some time to dissect these larger issues. I don't, I know for one, that I'm sure, not just for me, you know, I need time to digest the, the solutions presented and the, and the problems presented, and I need time to really look at all of our options and get feedback from our residents as well. So I think that, to our staff, I would just like to point out, and to City Manager Johnson, we need that time to digest, and we need that time to talk amongst the commissioners at meetings. And sometimes that's difficult to do in a, in a standard meeting. So I think we learned that today, and I hope that that is practiced on many of the issues that we have. I would like to just kind of close with remembering a very tiny giant that was from our, in our country, Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I always very much looked up to her and looked up to her work in the Supreme Court, and wanted to close with something that she said that she would like to be remembered by. And she said, when posed with the question, how would she like to be remembered? And she says, "Someone who used whatever talent she had to do her work to the very best for her ability, and to help repair tears in her society, to make things a little better, the use of whatever ability she has, to do something, as my colleague David Suter would say, 'outside myself,' because I've gotten much more satisfaction for the things that I've done for which I was not paid." And so I would just like to close with, I think we all could live by that a little more and do a little more for things outside of ourselves. And with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Board?
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Kra?
Yes.
Muntzer?
Absolutely.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.